Welcome to the December 13th Planning and Zoning Meeting. Shannon, if we could have roll call, please.
Here.
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 Thank you. If you can join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice,
Okay. If we could go over the minutes and approval of minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the minutes.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
At this time, public comments for anything that isn't on the agenda. If anybody wishes to get up and address any issues they have, please do so. Okay, take it. There is none. Thank you. Staff comments?
Good evening, Commissioners. We are working on scheduling that workshop on the Vacation Rental Ordinance, so it will be a joint workshop with the Planning Commission and City Council. And we're currently looking at toward the end of January, and that would be an evening one, so we're hoping we might be able to make that happen on the 24th of January at 6:00 PM. That is not yet solidified. We need to verify that that might be a date. If not, we'll be looking either at that following week or sometime early in February. We are also going to be meeting with a representative from Fort Grounds to start working on that Neighborhood Compatibility Ordinance, which also the City Council has asked us to do a workshop with the neighborhood on that, as well as the community at large, others that might be interested in helping us form that ordinance. And so we'll also be finding out if the Planning Commission would like to be part of that workshop. And then lastly, a couple items to update you on for January. Our January meeting, we will have, there's Thomas Lane, which is a request for annexation, the PUD and a subdivision. And then there's also a special use permit request off of Seltice Way. The Lundian Violin, the Neighborhood Commercial Zoning request that was denied, that's actually going to be going to City Council on appeal in January, so I want to give you an update on that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next, do we have any comments from the Board of Commissioners? Okay. We've got three public hearings tonight, and there are sign-up sheets for anyone who wishes to talk on any of the items, and they certainly can come up and speak after the applicant has their time to come up. And if you want to sign up on the sheet and not speak, that's fine as well. There's a box that you can check whether you're in favor or not in favor of the particular item that we're hearing. So the first hearing tonight is, the applicant is Iron Legacy. The location is west side of Atlas Road, south of Hanley. It's a proposed 7.46 acre annexation from County LI to City C-17. And this is a legislative item, and it's item number A-6-16. And the staff, Sean, give us your report.
All right. Thank you, Members of the Planning Commission. Good evening. Tonight before you, as Mr. Messina said, is a request, A-616, which is an annexation for plus or minus 7.46 acres from County Light Industrial to C-17. The location is southwest corner of Atlas and Hanley intersection. So as you guys know, and we state for everybody here at the audience, as well as the people watching at home, is Planning Commission will make a recommendation to Council as to whether or not to annex into the property and make a suggestion of what that zoning designation should be. Here's an aerial photograph of the property. The white denotes the subject. You can see here that is a portion of the greater property that is owned by the applicant at some point. This will change ownership, and I'll have a little bit of a discussion in the future about what's happening there. Here is the annexation map. I've highlighted in yellow what is the request. It is important to note a little bit here, this little tail that's down at the southern end, there was a portion of the right-of-way that was not annexed in in the past, and that is included here. State law requires that we annex the entire right-of-way, so we're going to fix that with this request. All right. So, C-17, here's a definition of what that is. Basically says that it will provide for wholesale, retail, limited service, heavy commercial, in addition to allowing residential at a density of R-17, or 17 units per gross acre. Should be located adjacent to arterials, however, joint access developments are encouraged. This is a pretty busy slide. It's not something that I'm going to go through and read, but I wanted to show all of the principal uses that are allowed in C-17. Those can be found in your staff report. Here is the existing zoning as it currently sits in the county. Subject property is right here. Down here, Light Industrial is circled. It is currently zoned, or currently zoned, Light Industrial. So, the findings. First finding B-8 is that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies. So the subject property is contiguous with city limits, and it also can be found in the land use area of Atlas Prairie, and it's in the transition, which is green, which is denoted here on the map. This is the subject property. The black line shows the Atlas Prairie outline, and then the description of what a transitional property is. So this is Atlas Prairie today. Once again, this is in your staff report. Basically defines what it was, at least in 2007. More important is what Atlas Prairie will be tomorrow. I've highlighted a couple of bullet points here that are the most pertinent to this request. Annexation requires careful evaluation of infrastructure needs. We'll go through what the, what staff has said about that. Open space parks, pedestrian and bicycle connections will be provided. There is, there is some bicycle connections already existing, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that in a moment. And neighborhood service nodes where appropriate. This would, if it's, if it's developed in the manner that they have indicated, it would be considered a neighborhood service node. So the comprehensive plan goals and objectives, I've listed them out here. I did not define them all. They are defined inside of your staff report. And finding B-9 is that the public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. For stormwater, they, they basically say that the adjacent to curb is generally where the swales will be located, most likely, and it's tough to tell until we get a building permit on the property. The same with streets. The most important thing to note here is that off of the Hanley intersection, we will not require, or we will not allow access within 300 feet of the intersection because there's a dedicated turn lane there for traffic coming and going. We want to be sure that those don't create conflicts. Water Department stated that the water is available. It's located on, on the two sides of the property, Hanley and Atlas. Wastewater as well is that the wastewater is available to the site, however, no stub is to the site. That's pretty typical because it's located in the county currently, and that they will be required to install that at their own expense. Okay, so parks, and this is what I've alluded to a little bit, is they are requesting that we take a look at a piece of proper, at the property that is currently owned by the applicant that's a little farther down. There is a fence that comes really close to the Hanley right-of-way there, and we are requesting a 20-foot easement or a dedication of right-of-way to allow the trail through there. The rational nexus isn't quite all there because it's not directly adjacent to the property, but because of timing, we don't know when the other piece of property may or may not ever come into city limits. So we thought it was a good bargaining time to request the applicant provide the space for a trail in the future. That's denoted here on this map. Here's the, the pinch point where this kind of green area is. Once again, this is the subject property. And when we do get an application for a building permit, assuming that this is annexed, they will provide the improvements to the trail along their frontage along Atlas. Finding B-9 is that public facilities are or are not available and adequate for the Okay, so parks, trails, and street trees. Katie Kosinki, the urban forester, is just saying that wherever the public right-of-way is, that those are considered street trees, and you need a permit to prune or remove them. And there's a picture. Fire Department, this is pretty typical language that they provide to us, is that they take a look at access to the site as well as the fire protection. Largely, this comes at the time of site development or building permits. Okay. Finding B-10 is that the physical characteristics of the site make or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. The site is relatively flat. It has recently been cleared of trees. There is a buffer yard, or a buffer grove of trees that separates this between Hawks' Nest, and due to the nature of the area being surrounded by existing city limits, as long, as well as the city utilities that are adjacent, it's the opinion of staff that the project is suitable at this time for development and annexation. Here are some photos of the subject property. This is taken just south of the request. The southern line is right along the edge of this road. This is known in the county as Hearn Avenue, looking towards Atlas out here. This is closer to Atlas, looking north, where a trail will ultimately be located when it's developed. And this is a picture of the subject site itself, looking into it, and you can see Hawks' Nest off to the north side there of Hanley Avenue. And this is along Hanley Avenue. This is that pinch point that we're talking about where there isn't quite enough room to get the, the sized trail and the space that we need for street trees, et cetera, along Hanley. And then doing a 180 and turning around and looking the other way, here's where the, the trail ends. Right. Finding B-11 is that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic neighborhood character and existing or existing land uses. So the Atlas Prairie descriptions that we've already gone through from the 2007 comprehensive plan, as well as finding B-8, the pictures that we just went through, basically describe the context of the area. Okay, so as far as traffic goes, Shane responded, and it's a, I completely agree with him. Based upon all of those different uses that are allowed in C-17 at this time, it's very difficult for us to, to make any sort of estimate as to how much traffic it will generate. It can be a number of different things. So at the time of building permits, that's when the city will take a look at any extraordinary traffic impacts and possibly require a traffic study if needed. Here is a generalized land use pattern. You can see largely to the north, it is, it is all residential, basically with connecting paths. This is the Prairie Trail running here in blue. The blue over here is the new site for the, for Fire Department. This is Boulevard Third Edition, which you guys recently looked at, the PUD right across the street to the east. The red line denotes city limits property, so you can see this is one of those, what I lovingly refer to as donut holes inside of the city limits, where there's county property inside of city limits. The industrial park is kind of the southwest portion of this, south of the Prairie Trail. You can see the existing zoning. This is Zone Manufacturing, which makes a lot of sense. R-8 to the north, and then we have PUD to the east. So the comments, staff comments to recommend the City Council for an annexation agreement. We don't typically require or allow for conditions for an annexation. It's done through an annexation agreement, so this language we would like to see end up in the annexation agreement unless we can possibly get the 20 feet prior to the complete annexation agreement being signed and approved, is to provide a 20-foot section in the form of an easement or dedication at, from the southern curb along Hanley Avenue. And there's a map on page nine for your staff report. And the Planning Commission must consider this request and make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice, and your finding work sheets are attached. And here are those findings in one sheet. So that's it for staff. If there's any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. The applicant here to?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chris Clark, 1859 North Lakewood Drive, number 103. I am here as a representative of Tri-State Consulting Engineers on behalf of our client, Iron Legacy LLC.
Can you just raise your hand, and I'll swear in. You solemnly swear and confirm that testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as help you God?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Honestly, I think that the city has really made a lot of the points I came here to make tonight for me. The first one being that, of course, the subject property sitting at the southwest corner of Hanley and Atlas isn't an infill zone for the city. The donut holes that were described make it very apt to be ready to be a part of the city, and I know that my clients are very excited to be a part of the city as well. When we look at the area around the subject parcel, you see, as described, that both to the north and east of the property, you see a lot of single-family residential going on there. And again, to the south and west, you see a lot of light industrial and manufacturing uses going on. We believe that with the annexation and future development that's planned for this parcel, that we're going to create a very nice buffer between those two, and also provide some very essential services to the growing areas in that particular part of town as the city of Coeur d'Alene continues to grow out to the west. As the staff report was nice enough to state, we already have easy access to both water and sewer services from the city, so those things come through very easily. And it's already pretty much ready to go for development with your guys' blessing and the city councils, and we believe that it would fit very nicely with the city. And the minor issues that have come up regarding the pinch point have already, those discussions have already begun between our client and the city in order to come to a, a good understanding on that before we ever get to the end of this process. I believe the rest of it's pretty much been stated clearly. Do you have any questions?
Chris, not.
Thank you.
All right. I had one person, Chris, you signed up in favor. You're the only person that signed up, so you can rebuttal yourself if you'd like. There's no other public testimony at this time, so I would close public testimony and wait for a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll tell you a stat about it. Okay. This matter having come before the Planning Commission on December 13th, 2016, and there being a present a person requesting approval of item A-6-16, a request for zoning prior to annexation from County LI to City C-17. The applicant is Iron Legacy LLC. Location is plus or minus 7.46 acre parcel located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Atlas Road and Hanley Avenue. As part of the motion, I would use for the decision criteria and findings and accept findings B-1 through B-7. B-8, that the proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies as follows, citing 1.12 community design, 1.16 connectivity, 2.02 economic development and workforce development, and 3.06 home environment. B-9, that the public facilities and utilities are available and adequate for the proposed use. This is based on the staff report. That the physical characteristics of the site do make it suitable for the request at this time, also per the staff report. That the proposal would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and existing land uses, again, per the staff report. The Planning Commission pursuant to the aforementioned funds, the request of Iron Legacy LLC for zoning prior to annexation as described in the application, should be approved. Question for staff. This element of the suggested provision, should I add, add that to the motion? So there's an addition, suggested provision for inclusion in an annexation agreement, which would read as follows. In parks, provide 20 feet in the form of an easement or dedication of right-of-way from southern curb for a future trail along Hanley Avenue, where there's a pinch point. See map on page nine of the staff report. With that, I'd...
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Okay. We got a motion by Ruppler, second by Fleming. We have a roll call?
Fleming?
Aye.
Luttrell?
Aye.
Ruppler?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes on item S-6-16. Next item up is, applicant is Sean McMahon. Location is 3882 North Schreiber Way. A proposed professional office special use permit in the M Manufacturing Zone District. It's SP-216. And Mike, you ready to do a staff report?
This is a public hearing for item SP-6-16. Application of Lake Drive Apartments LLC requesting a special use permit to allow a density increase to R-34 for a proposed 30-unit multifamily apartment building in the C-17 commercial zoning district on property located at 315 East Coeur d'Alene Lake Drive. Legal notice was published in the Coeur d'Alene Press on November 26, 2016, and all the required notifications have been made. Here is the subject property located here, highlighted in red. This is Sherman Avenue. This is Interstate 90, and the green light, green line indicates the city limit boundary. The applicant is proposing to allow a total of 30 residential units on the subject site. The current zoning allows for a total of 15 residential units on this size of a parcel. The applicant has indicated that there will also be a commercial component on the first floor of the development. The applicant has indicated that the commercial use will most likely be a coffee shop. The C-17 zoning allows for the proposed commercial activity as a permitted use. The proposed structure is a five, is five stories tall and will be allowed a maximum height of 63 feet in accordance with the proposed R-34 zoning height restrictions for multifamily structures. The subject property is vacant and has been for many years. There are some mature ponderosa pine trees on the property, and the applicant has indicated that they intend to save as many of them as possible within the proposed development. East Sherman and this area are currently being studied to encompass a new redevelopment plan and strategy for this part of the city. The applicant has indicated that the proposed development may kick-start and help the process of revitalizing this area of the city. This is a close-up aerial photograph of the property. As you can see, it's highlighted in red, and you can see there's two parcels associated with this. The applicant will have to undergo a lot consolidation process with the city. Here's the site plan that the applicant has submitted. You can see this is Coeur d'Alene Lake Drive here. 23rd Street is here. Department complex is here, and the applicant has submitted some building elevations of the property. And this is one viewing from the, looking north, looking southwest through the property. And this is O'Shea's Restaurant here. And this is just a ground-level view of the building. There are three findings that need to be met in order to approve a special use permit. The first finding is that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan indicates this area in the historical heart district, and you can see it's highlighted in green, it's area in transition. This is a list of three comprehensive plan objectives as they relate to the special use permit. The full list is on page nine and 10 of your staff report. First one is community design, support, enhance the existence of urbanized areas, and discourage sprawl. Second one is efficiency, promote the effect, the efficient use of existing infrastructure, and then manage growth. The comprehensive plan indicates that characteristics of the historical heart district will be areas that infill regulations providing opportunities, incentives for redevelopment and mixed-use development will reflect the scale of the existing neighborhoods while allowing for an increase in density. There'll be increased number of and retaining existing street trees, and that commercial building sizes will remain lower in scale than in the downtown core. The area in the future will be area of increased density, and Sherman Avenue and I-90 will be gateways to our community, and stakeholders will work together to find a balance between commercial, residential, and mixed-use development. Finding B-8B, the design and planning of the site is or is not compatible with the location, setting, and existing uses on adjacent properties. Here's some site photos of the property, looking at the existing use on the property, which is vacant, and what is next to it. To the north is O'Shea's Restaurant. This is standing on the center of the property, looking east to the hotel uses and the vacant properties. This is looking south to the vacant property. And this is looking west towards the golf course. This is the existing zoning, and shows the C-17 to the north, south, and to the west is the C-17 PUD. And to the east is the city of Fernand Lake Village, and their zoning is commercial between Interstate 90 and this property. Some special use permits in the past, just to the north, we had SP-912, so in 2012, we had a special use permit for a cell tower. And then the existing land use map shows the commercial activity to the north and south, and then the golf course used to the west. Finding B-8C, the location and design of the size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services. Utility project managers indicated that wastewater utility, utility presently has wastewater system capacity and willingness to serve this project as proposed. And the water superintendent has indicated that they have no objection to the proposed special use permit as proposed. And the public works inspector has indicated that stormwater treatment can be addressed during the time of building permits, and that the existing street right-of-way widths meet current city standards, and no alterations to the street sections will be required. The engineering department has no objection to the proposed special use permit as proposed. The Parks Department has no objection to this permit also. The Fire Department said they can address any safety requirements that needs during the building permit or site development process. And the recommended conditions for the special use permit as follows. Wastewater has two, and planning has one. Wastewater has indicated the applicant will not be allowed to build the proposed carport over an existing public sewer main along the north property line. The subject property will be required to connect to the eight-inch public sewer main within the 23rd Street right-of-way, and planning's recommendation is prior to issuance of any building permits, two parcels will need to be consolidated through the city's lot consolidation process. The Planning Commission will need to consider this request and make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. That concludes my presentation. Available to answer any questions. The applicant's architect is also here to make a presentation as well.
Thanks, Sean.
All right, thanks.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you, welcome.
Dick Stauffer, six oh one Front Avenue, North Stauffer Architects, representing the applicant. I've had the pleasure to stand in front of this body thirty or forty times over the last thirty years, and I think we always, anytime we bring something forth, we always ask ourselves if we're going to come in and advocate, is it something as professionals that we believe is a reasonable request and something that would fit well within our community? And this is one of the easiest ones we've ever brought forth, in that it just, East Sherman, City Council, your planning staff, your body has been eager for something to happen on East Sherman, and something to jumpstart that end of the community. We agree with everything in Mike's staff report, and let's see. His pictures were, how do we get out of this? Mike's photographs were actually better than mine, but I think the most striking thing about this request is that it's almost in a wasteland, for lack of a better word. The golf course occupies a large acreage immediately to the west. And then we have two streets, we have a very wide street, Quarter Lane Lake Drive, which is the old highway, which is a very wide right-of-way on the east, and then vacant property to the south, and then O'Shea's Tavern to the north. But it is a, once again, not a great, because of the green color, but it is a large area of asphalt with nothing going on. Winter photographs, once again, it looks like it could be out in a rural area the way it is right now, but really, no activity other than O'Shea's Tavern. And I think it should be noted that this is currently a commercially zoned parcel, so a lot of things are possible to do without any additional entitlement. But because residential, high-density residential has been a good market here for a number of years, but that continues to be where the opportunity lies. And much like the Lake Villa development further to the east, the availability of the freeway access, the trail systems, immediate recreational opportunity, and still being close to downtown, it continues to be a good place for high-density residential. A little bit of color on this to help it pop a little bit, but you can see the Quarter Lane Lake Drive on the right side of the screen, which is to the east, and Twenty-third Street. So it stretches from street to street, there would be access from both sides, giving it very good vehicular access. Twenty-third, I believe, also serves as the Centennial Trail, so it runs right by that side of the development we think is attractive for a residential development. And then, in order to get, to park a development of this, a bulk of this, but you can see the trees are actually surveyed in here, and so the initial schematic shows most working around the trees as much as possible. There are a few, and the health of the trees really hasn't been examined at this point, but certainly good, healthy, big trees, where there'll be an attempt to save them. As an infill project, no extension, no street building, no sewer building, other than taps, no water building, all these services are in place and would be adequate, as you heard in the staff report, to serve this kind of a development. We've done an initial, once again, to give you a flavor of where we're going, we're looking at a five-story building, four stories of residences over some common area and possibly a small commercial area on the lower level, giving a little bit of life to the residential. Backing up one more time, just to the aerial. We think this is, it's a good fit for this area because, as mentioned, the access, the ability to be downtown continues to be a very popular residential opportunity, which is very limited right now. There are, there's a perimeter development going on in single-family and the low-end residential, but the stuff that's downtown within striking distance of Sherman is still pretty limited, and this would be an opportunity to expand that market. With that, I would open it up to any questions you might have.
You have questions? Questions?
Just curious, any lake views from the?
If there is not, there's probably some filter views. The anticipation was, but the vegetation is strong enough around the golf course that it filters, at the upper levels are some filter views, but it would be probably misrepresented to say that it was lake view property.
It looks like a very nice design.
Yeah.
Dick, I got a question. I see you have like seventy-two parking spaces?
Yeah.
And you have thirty units, and some will be used for perhaps that coffee?
I think for schematic purposes, Tom, it's Mr. Chairman, excuse me, that the idea would be to overpark it initially and then probably swallow some of that back up with landscaping and common area. What we've tried to show is the area, oops, lost my slide there. The area out here would be a common, like a picnic area, and that's the area with most of the big trees right now, and so hopefully we can work a green space into that and keep the trees and create a garden area for the residents. After that, you know, you try and create two spots per unit, and maybe, you know, absorb some more of that back into landscaping.
Okay, question for staff, as far as the parking question goes, what's the requirement for this type of project with this many units for parking stalls? Is there something that's required already?
Are they one-bedroom units or two? That has yet to be determined, but we are trying to provide for two.
It's one space for one bedroom, two spaces for?
One space for one bedroom?
Two and beyond.
Two and beyond.
And that mix is still being worked on.
Okay, and parking, I'm only asking this because parking is always an issue, and, you know, parking is certainly on Quarter Lane Lake Drive is probably not an option, and maybe on Twenty-third, if there's overflow in that neighborhood. And I don't know where this project is going to go, but it always comes up, you know, we have projects that overflow into the street, and hopefully that won't happen on Twenty-third.
Yeah, and I think that's a conversation that has happened with the applicant already and will continue on through the design process.
Okay, well, I wish you luck on this, and I think this is something that is long time coming for that area, which would also probably help East Sherman area to perhaps kick-start something down in that section close to there, so I wish you the best.
Hopefully, this could be a catalyst for a number of properties down there that have been kind of sitting on their hands.
Okay, great, thanks. That's it?
Okay, thank you.
Before you go away, Dick, again, you're the only one that signed up, unless you want to rebuttal yourself?
I will not rebut myself.
Okay, thank you. Okay, public testimony is closed. We have any discussion or a motion?
All for a motion.
Go right ahead.
Please. Alrighty, let's see, this matter, having come before the planning commission on December thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and there being a person present requesting approval of item SP dash six dash sixteen, a request for an R thirty-four density increase special use permit in the C seventeen zoning district. The applicant being Lake Drive Apartments LLC, and the location, a point-nine acre parcel located at three fifteen East Quarter Lane Lake Drive. I would propose that the planning commission adopt items B one through B seven. Findings B eight pursuant to section seventeen point oh nine point two two zero, special use permit criteria. A special use permit may be approved only if the proposal conforms to all of the following criteria to the satisfaction of the planning commission. So findings B eight A, that the proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plans, as reported by Mike during his staff report. Finding B eight B, the design and planning of this site is compatible with the location, setting, and existing uses on adjacent properties, and this is based on meeting several of the objectives, and I'd like to point out in particular, objective one point one two, the community design, it supports the enhancement of existing urbanized areas and discourages sprawl. Item or objective, I'm sorry, two point zero one, business image and diversity, objective three point zero one, managed growth, and objective four point oh one, city services, making our decision based on the needs and the desires of the citizenry. I would like to add at this time that in the applicant's narrative, he also did mention a couple, I felt, important objectives are being met, and that's one point one six and two point zero five. Those objectives, if I can refer back to those, I believe it had to do with connectivity and pedestrian bicycle focus, so I do appreciate that. Continuing on, findings B eight C, that the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities and services, and this, of course, is based on the various department reports and feedback from the department leads. So the planning commission pursuant to the aforementioned finds that the Lake Drive Apartments LLC for a special use permit, as described in the application, should be approved. There are, however, two special conditions that need to be followed, actually, three, let me correct myself, three, two under wastewater, that the applicant will not be allowed to build the proposed carport over an existing public sewer main along the northerly property line, and number two, the subject property will be required to connect to the eight-inch public sewer main within the Twenty-third Street right-of-way. Under the planning section, number, the third special condition is prior to issuance of any building permit, that the two parcels will need to be consolidated through the city's lot consolidation process to allow the building or buildings to be built over the existing property line. And that's my motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on SP six dash sixteen. Motion by Ward, second by Fleming. Roll call, Shannon?
Fleming?
Aye.
Luttrell?
Aye.
Rupppler?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Motion passes, SP sixteen does pass. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next motion is the applicant is Lake City Engineering. Location is northern end of Victoria Drive, approximately at one point five one acre annexation from city AS to city R three. Mike, thank you.
This is a public hearing for item A dash seven dash sixteen, application by Lake City Engineering for Brown Living Trust, requesting an annexation of approximately one point five acres in conjunction with zoning approval from County Agricultural Suburban to R three zoning district on property located north of and adjacent to nine nine three Victorian Drive. Legal notice was published in the Quarter Lane Press on November twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, and all other required notifications have been made. Here is a site location map of the property. As you can see, the green line represents the city limits, and the red is the subject property. This is Fernand Lake, this is Interstate ninety. Here's a close-up aerial photograph of the property. The owner of the property also owns this property, and is proposing to annex in this Here is an annexation map that was submitted with the application, and the site is in red here, and here's a close-up of that showing the meets and bounds of that area. Here's an annexation history map indicating that in the seventies, this part of the city it was annexed in, and then in the eighties, this, and this was in nineteen eighty-four, and in the nineties over here. Here's the existing zoning, to the south is R three, and in the county, it's Ag Suburban. And the proposed zoning would be R three, which is consistent with the properties to the south. There are four findings that need to be met in order to prove an annexation. First finding is finding B eight, that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan indicates this area in the Fernand Hill Bench area, and it is located in the urban reserve part. And urban reserve areas represent lower priorities for city growth due to natural constraints such as topography, soils, and wetlands. This is a list of the comprehensive plan objectives as it relates to this annexation request. The rest of the full list is on page nine and ten of your staff report, and this objective one point one four is efficiency, promote the effective use of existing infrastructure thereby reducing impacts to underdeveloped areas. The next one is three point oh two, manage growth, coordinate planning efforts with our neighboring cities and Cootney County, emphasizing connectivity and open spaces, and the third one is neighborhoods. Protect and preserve existing neighborhoods from incompatible land uses and developments. Finding B nine, that public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. City staff from engineering, streets, water, parks, wastewater and fire departments have reviewed this application request in regards to public utilities and public facilities, and each department has indicated that there are public facilities and public utilities available and adequate for the proposed annexation with the zoning to R three. The complete list of the staff's comments is on page eleven of your staff report. Finding B ten, that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. There is approximately forty-five-foot elevation drop on the subject property. There are no topographical or other physical constraints that would make the subject property unsuitable for the annexation request. This is a topographic map indicating the slope on the property. These are five-foot contours in yellow, and you can see the high parts here, and the property kind of slopes this way. Here's a site full of the property, standing on Victorian Drive, looking northeast. This is at the center of the property, looking south. This is looking towards the existing single-family residence, and this is looking northwest through the property. Finding B eleven, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. The engineering project manager has indicated traffic volumes from the site would be easily accommodated by the adjacent roads. The subject property is currently vacant, and single-family residents are located to the south, and the surrounding properties to the west, north, and east are natural wooded areas with mature trees located on them. The proposed R three zoning district, district is intended for those areas of the city that are developed at this density, or preferably developed at this density because of factors such as vehicle access, topography, flood hazard, and landslide hazard. Land use map indicates the single-family dwellings located to the south in yellow, and the other lots are vacant. Recommended items to be included in an annexation agreement. There are two items that are recommended. The first one is a short plat must be completed and processed concurrently with the annexation agreement and ordinance. And number two, all water rights associated with a parcel to be annexed shall be transferred to the city at the owner's expense. The decision point tonight is an annexation, the annexation of one point five acres in conjunction with zoning approval from County Ag Suburban to R three zoning district. The planning commission will need to consider this request and make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions. The applicant's representative is also here to make a presentation as well.
All right, thanks, Mike. Questions? Thanks. Do you solemnly swear and/or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth, the hope truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you guide?
I do.
Thanks, Tom.
Tom Torgerson, forty-eight oh eight Fernand Hill Road, Quarter Lane, Idaho eight three eight one four. Drew Dittman from Lake City Engineering is in another venture with the city of Post Falls tonight, so I appreciate the opportunity to present this application for annexation. I think it's really important to note that there is no proposed change of current use, and the sole reason for this application for annexation is to and the sole reason for this application for annexation is to resolve a 15-year-old mistake that occurred. And what had happened was, originally, the 50 or so acres that lies to the northeast of Fernand Hill Estates was originally, and I've seen the drawings, platted to be part of Fernand Hill Estates, which subsequently never occurred with the downturn in the market, and then was divided up into multiple 10-plus acre parcels through an Idaho code plat, is how that occurred. And this was about, the 1.5 acre piece and the additional nine or so acres was one of those. What occurred was the current brown parcel, the applicant, they wanted a buffer between their home and whatever was going to occur later. The owner at the time of that 10 and a half acre or so parcel, and he, without real estate counsel, I was not involved, Dan Schreiber was not involved, they just simply shook hands, figured out what they had wanted to accomplish, came up with some price, which I'm not aware of, and this 1.5 acre piece was surveyed and sold. There was no malintent. There was no desire to get a building permit. Nothing was done. And there is an error in the staff report. At the time, this is zoned, was zoned, and is zoned, agricultural suburban in the county. At the time this occurred, that was five units per acre, not one unit per five. So this could have been done legally. It was more than sufficient in size. Subsequent to that, about seven years ago, the county had wanted to reduce some of the density, and Ag Sub was the target. And so the Planning Commission and a committee of 12, which strangely I was on, came up with one unit per two acres, which is what the current density is for agricultural suburban, making this 1.5 acre piece impossible to become a legal parcel. There's no process to do it. For almost three years, and then subsequently, the other parcel was sold. Dan Schreiber represented the purchaser, and I represented the seller at that time, and the purchasers, the meritus of the parcel lying to the north of the subject 1.5 acre, sat on the property for a long time. When they went to get a building permit to build a shop, that's when this all came to light, which is about four years ago. Dan and I were notified by them to resolve the situation, and I, quite frankly, with the prior community development director at the county, was given very little support, and basically, he said, "It's illegal. There's no way to fix it." He was never willing to meet, and Hillary wasn't here then, he was never willing to come over to the city so we could all sit down and do so. When David Callahan came on board, and with a very patient Mr. Meredith, David was like, "Let's figure out how to do this." And he came over to the city, and we met with Hillary and with the engineers here at the city, and Dan and myself came up with, "Well, we can do this, and this is annexing the 1.5 acre parcel with no intent to build a home." And then, on the county side, they will, if that illegal parcel, if that illegal split is annexed, they have no issue then, and they'll resolve the remainder parcel, the nine or so acre parcel, through an administrative process. So through the workings, and I'm very appreciative because this has been a long time coming, we will be then going through the short plat process, and I know that people get uptight when we use the word subdivision or short plat. The only reason to do the short plat is it's code requirement by the city through the annexation because we have to combine the current Brooks residence adjacent to this, to the south, with the 1.5 acre, and that's what the subsequent and upcoming short plat process will be, purely to combine them. There will be no, there will be one lot that's larger than the current lot. The city obviously will obtain property tax revenues from this, but in effect, nothing on the ground changes. And I'm very aware of water issues and pressure and flows in that neighborhood, and so there's nothing that's. And the other interesting thing is, on the north and northeast edge of this 1.5 acre parcel, the city of Coeur d'Alene has a very significant sewer easement, and this actually brings the city limits up to a main, I don't know if it's a connector that goes from Victorian down to French Gulch Road, I believe. So, but it's been a very long time coming, but the thought process behind what we're doing is very simple, and nothing on the ground actually changes. With that, I entertain any questions?
I've got a question for staff. If this goes through down the road, and it's an R-3, they can get, what, about three units perhaps on this if they decide to put housing there? But it would be more housing than, or is there other buildings they can put in an R-3 if it's zoned R-3?
You're looking at, would you like me to?
No, I'm looking at staff right now to ask.
That is correct. So the short plat process, as Tom described, is correct, that they're just trying to bring this into the city to legalize the lot in the county, as well as merge this one in the city to be one lot. If they wanted to create additional lots in the future for the R-3 zoning, they'd have to do an additional subdivision.
So if they wanted to build anything, they would have to come back, subdivide the land, basically?
Correct.
And put that application in for whatever that building might be?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
And Commissioner, or Chairman, in addition, topographically and frontage-wise, it would be pretty challenging. I could see how you could get one in there.
Right.
Yeah. And there's no intent.
Okay. Any other questions?
But as far as zoning goes, if the zoning, if this goes through, we're recommending the zoning be the same as all the property currently in the city to the south.
Right.
So there's really no, you know, there's no change, if you would, other than annexation to the city.
Sure. Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
I have Dan Schreiber. He's in favor and wishes to testify. Want to come up, Dan?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I have a, is it Agenda Foster?
Jane Foster.
Oh, I'm sorry. You in favor, but you do not wish to testify, or?
I'm in favor of this. I do not wish to testify.
Thank you.
Questions?
Sam Campbell is neutral and does not want to testify. Okay. And then Ed and?
Darlene.
Darlene DeYoung. They are opposed, and they did not indicate whether or not you wanted to speak or not speak. You're welcome to, if you'd like to.
I do. Where am I going?
You're okay? All right. Thank you. That's it for the sign-up sheet. Tom, you can come up and rebuttal yourself again if you'd like.
I do that.
Okay. Thank you. Public testimony is closed. Anyone ready for a motion?
Does it need any discussion? Is any discussion necessary?
Yeah. A discussion or motion?
Not really.
I can't do it.
I'll give a shot.
Go for it. Good man.
Glasses. Thank you. This matter having come before the Planning Commission on December 13th, 2016, and there being present a person requesting approval of item A-7-16, a request for zoning part annexation from County AS to City R-3. The applicant is Lake City Engineering. Location, the property is located north and adjacent to 993 Victorian Drive in Coeur Justification for the decision criteria stands in fact relied upon, we may adopt items B, and I would like to recommend that we adopt B-1 through B-7. That the proposal is in confor, B-8, excuse me, that the proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies as follows, and if you'd give me a moment here, I'll find a few, both per the staff report and the applicant's written testimony. We have objective 1.12, community design supports enhancement of existing urbanized areas. Objective 1.14, efficiency, promote the efficient use of existing infrastructure. 3.01, which is managed growth. 3.04, which is neighborhoods. And 3.05, which is neighborhoods, protect and preserve existing neighborhoods. B-9, the public facilities and utilities are available and adequate for the proposed use. This is based on the staff report. B-10, that the physical characteristics of the site do make it suitable for the request at this time, again, per the staff report. B-11, that the proposal would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, or and existing land uses. In addition, I would cite the staff report and the applicant's testimony. Conclusion of decision, the Planning Commission pursuant to the aforementioned finds that the request of Lake City Engineering, Inc., for zoning part annexation as described in the applicant, application should be approved with two suggested provisions for inclusion in the annexation agreement, which would read as follows. Number one, a short plat must be completed and processed concurrently with annexation agreement and ordinance. And number two, all water rights associated with the parcel to be annexed shall be transferred to the city at the owner's expense. And I'm going to wait a second.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Ruppler, second by Unkrup. Roll call, Shannon?
Fleming?
Aye.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Ruppler?
Aye.
Ward? Aye.
Okay. The motion passes. A-7-16 passes. Thank you. Before I adjourn or ask for adjournment, I'd like to wish everyone out in TV land a Merry Christmas and hopefully a safe new year. I want to thank staff for their tremendous work they do for us and the citizens of Coeur d'Alene during the year, so thank you for that. And I wish my fellow commissioners a happy holiday and drive safe and stay warm.
Thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second.
So be it. Motion adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.